Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, so the first thing we got here is maintenance.
Morning.
Morning Glenn, how are you?
Great.
He says we're condition.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Storm Kevin blew me away this morning, so... The first one's for Joddo Tremble. They have the recycling down there close to our property and then right back there. It's just do that and keep going with it.
So we do a little, we have contract, is it annual with them or three years?
This one is three years, I believe, right?
Three years, okay.
Yes.
Are they putting more containers in there? Because they're like now Bunson's gonna stop doing it at the end of the year and they're recommending everybody bring it here.
Yeah, I saw that in the newspaper. They put it out, saying go to four seven.
We've been fortunate.
We've been fortunate, so it hasn't been too bad. We got the minor stuff, but it hasn't been as bad as the other sites yet. I really don't know why, so we go out and talk to people, so hopefully that helps.
Yeah, and we're making some headway. We have a meeting this week, right? Or is it next week?
Just next week.
Next week?
Yeah, we're moving forward, put that centralized facility inside. Greg?
Greg.
If we have a problem, we can call, so we get someone to do it pretty good.
Okay, so do we have a motion on that?
Second.
Mr. Claypool?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Landy?
Yes.
Number two, Glenn?
Number two's on the whole first floor hallway of the courthouse. We've been having some laugh drop, laugh and plaster drop. They hit the drop ceiling and everything up there. This is a four and a half day project, so this is the best time to do it. It's going to Thanksgiving. The judges are gonna shut down at noon on Wednesday, so we're gonna go in, we're gonna tape all the walls, tape everything. They're gonna lay plywood down on the marble floors, get it all out, and then they're gonna start... If they get behind, they'll work Thanksgiving morning, and then they're gonna start Friday morning and demo that whole... Get all that laugh out and everything out and then put in the drop ceiling. They're also doing air quality control up there in the courthouse because of all the dust and everything, so there's... This is the best time of trying to not shut down the courthouse.
What, explain how this came about Glenn? Like what's the history of this? Is this, I guess, is this the drop ceiling or is this paint coming off the ceiling?
Back in the old days, they had like one by fours and then they have plaster on top of that. For a couple of years, we've been having pieces drop, small pieces, nothing to really be concerned about or anything. But on the second floor, we had the big brown lights up there was noticeable. They started pulling that laugh out, so and it started dropping all that stuff. So it became, so we went down to the first floor, started looking at it. Is it, is it at a safety problem at the moment? No, but we're also looking at, we need the four days to do this, right? When, what time is the best to do this when there's no one in the courthouse?
But like how bad is it? And what is it? I mean, is this the drop ceiling you're saying, or this is like plaster falling down?
Above the drop ceiling.
Yeah, and it's, so there's a drop ceiling, but then above, so we're not even seeing where this is getting fixed?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so it's not really falling, so there's a drop ceiling here, but it's above that. It's falling on top of the drop ceiling?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Fortunately, we haven't had anything big enough that drops and goes through the drop ceiling.
So it's like heavy pieces?
It can be. Fortunately, it's been small pieces, and if you see the big round lights up there, we're gonna change those out and take them off because those are attached to the laugh up there, so over the years.
I mean, this is where the problem is, is I'm gonna tell you, this is exactly why we're looking at what we're doing with the feasibility study. And to be quite honest with you, I mean, it's a situation where this is a lot of money. This is not...
This is a chump change.
It's kind of like another hole in the boat.
You know, and it's like something if it's dropping on people or something, but it's like, I don't know. I mean...
Right, now we're applying, well, we could start to say reasonably, we might be out of there as soon as two years. So anything we're doing going forward, if you gotta look at it and say...
I mean, we're making build, we're making improvements on something that, you know, realistically, I think that, I think that, you know, after last week's session with Bowen, it was pretty obvious that the dollars and cents, money is smarter to be spent to actually build new than to continue to put these Band-Aids on these buildings. And it's like, you know, forty-two grand is a lot, it's a lot...
Imagine if that was your house, you know, if somebody came, say, you gotta pay forty-two thousand.
Well, this is something that's gonna increase the value of something you were gonna sell, but in the case of the courthouse, it's just...
So how did this come up?
Tim had asked a question about whether, you know, this is a facade, a facade kind of thing. You've already got a ceiling in it, you're not really seeing this stuff drop. Is it not possible to go in there and just remove all the scale or whatever it is and remove the possibility of stuff dropping? We don't need to get up there and repair it because you got a false ceiling in there, so you would never see it. So we just get up there, remove all the defective material, so it's not falling through the roof or whatever the case is, and let it go with that and not repair anything. Is that not doable?
We can do that, but we've been doing that for the last couple of years. Right? Deputy or somebody will say, hey, we heard something drop while we're sitting here. All right, so we get up there, we look, okay, yep, there's some loose stuff. We try to pull more of the loose stuff down. So we've been doing this for a couple of years now.
So what, in your, you know, on a scale of one to ten, how urgent is this? I mean, is this something you've been talking, because this is the first I've heard of it, but...
This is something that's been going on, we've been looking at. When is the best time to do this? Right? When, when do we have the longest weekend where we can get in and do this without disrupting the courthouse?
I get that part of it.
It's the main entrance, main entrance to the courthouse.
I guess, you know, my question is, is it absolutely necessary? You know, is it, you know, because I don't know, I mean, I'm asking, I mean, I'm weighing on your judgment. You're saying you think it is, so...
We're trying to be proactive.
Okay, okay.
Because I mean proactive for me Glenn, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I'm not gonna support it. And I'm just gonna tell you personally, this is a situation where we're looking at forty-two thousand dollars. We're basically, there's our Bowen payment. There's our Bowen payment. We basically now paid nothing for, or not nothing because it's gonna be more than that, but I'm just saying, a huge chunk right there that we just saved on these dilapidated buildings that we're just gonna continue to put money on. I mean, I'm gonna vote no.
Do you, do you, would you mind if I came over and would you show me?
Yes.
Yeah, just so I have an understanding, because I don't wanna like make a snap judgment on something without, I mean, I'm not trying to be a naysayer or anything, but you know what, you know, it's just...
I totally understand.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm with Ron at this point in time. Based on the information, I'm looking at the scope of work we've got in there, and there's a lot of questions about that. I mean, is this really necessary?
If it was a safety issue that somebody was gonna get injured, it would be totally different, but as far as like this, just doing this maintenance stuff, we've got to finally put our foot down and say, draw the line in the sand and say, we need to really look at, we keep on putting all this money, just like the elevator at the, you know, at the center of town there. It's like, how much more money do we continue to put into these buildings? And we're not serving our employees' right and we're not serving our residents' right.
Yeah, and I've said it, you know, it's good money after bad, you know? That's the worst money to spend.
And what could you guys be doing if you're not constantly messing around with this stuff, you know? It's, you could be doing so much more other stuff that really could make a difference, but here you are, you're putting Band-Aids all over the county.
Maybe if you've got time, I mean, I could do it anytime you want today, tomorrow, whatever. If you could show it to me, you know, if it's, if you feel strongly enough that, you know, we should take another look at this, I mean, I'm sure we're all open to, you know...
For today, there's just, I can't do it.
Yeah, I can come over today too if you can give us a tour.
Right. So, right after lunch?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would be fine. I have to head up there anyway after we're done here, so maybe we could just swing in and just take...
What time after lunch?
Or, or right after the commissioners' meeting too, if you've got time.
I have a ten thirty down at the safety center.
Well, I'll call you because I'll be running around with the...
And then we'll just wait to hear back from you Tim, then give us your opinion on that?
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Table this.
Sounds good.
Thanks Glenn, appreciate it, appreciate it.
Okay, so now what does that do to this?
Uh, well, I guess we will have to, I don't know if we could just strike it, just draw a line through it on the financials?
Yep.
And then I guess they would each need to initial...
And then they would have to, but they're pulling it off.
I don't have a pen, do you have a paper?
Here.
Sure.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Get the idea of a pen?
Feel the power.
It's a dangerous pen, just be careful, you don't wanna hurt yourself, you know?
I'll do my best.
See, they let me go into the trunk rather than...
With that?
Yeah.
Really?
I'd take my pocket knife out of my pocket.
I don't, those people come up through Central America, they're not gonna be doing that for you.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I'm putting a line through that, particularly financial, and then I'm putting three small lines off to the side where each of you can initial that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the rest of today's financials include an encumbrance increase from the Water District to Bergen and Associates Incorporated to cover extra work not covered in the original contract to install program and start up BFDs at the Countryland Booster Station. We also have four travel requests from the county engineer, JFS, Maintenance, and the Public Defender's Office. The holding the vouchers, we have twenty-five thousand five seventy-six ten from the commissioner's office to the Georgia County Airport Authority for reimbursement number one to the airport runway lighting project, twenty-two thousand six twenty-two ninety-three from the commissioner's office to Destination Giaga for the third quarter bed tax dispersment, forty-eight thousand nine forty-three sixty-eight from the Department of Development, CED, to Lakeland Management Systems Incorporated for the Brookshire BOE office accessibility project, fifty-five thousand to thirty-five thirty from Maintenance to Garland DBS Incorporated for pay request number one for the rehabilitation of the roof at the Safety Center, and fifteen thousand six forty-six from Transit to Foxter Solutions for Transit's ride scheduling software. And finally, a revenue certification from ADP Board to certify their initial revenue and their new contract services funding.
I just have two questions. Glenn, how's the maintenance, are they, are they finished with the roof?
Yes, sir.
Yep?
Yep, it's been good, so...
At the Safety Center?
Yes, sir.
Yep, and that, those guys did a good job, they were on time, and they're gonna come back and do one more, uh...
They did that?
Yep.
This year was a little difficult for time-wise because of the rain and everything. We were on top of it and making sure that they didn't open something up when the storm was coming in and all works up.
Okay.
But we finally got that all completed and everything.
So this is payment number one of...
I'm not sure how many there will be.
How much is that one for?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
That's, that's just the material one.
So it'll be at least one more.
Correct.
And then the other question I had, Destination Giaga, their quarter bed tax dispersment, you know, how does that compare? Are those numbers up, or do they stay about the same year in, year out?
I'm not exactly sure about that. Debbie didn't indicate that they were a lot more or a lot less, so I'd imagine it's about what's expected.
Okay.
I can let you know.
That sounds, I, that doesn't sound lower, because I'm trying to remember their annual payment. I thought it was around seventy or something like that, so they're at twenty-two, that's, that's, seems like it's up.
Right, so they have a new director, I think, right? Didn't they hire somebody new?
Perma-Chi?
Yeah, yeah. You know, it'd probably be a good idea to maybe, maybe catch up with her and just see, you know, how they're doing and...
Yeah, they're the primary recipient of all that bed tax money.
Right, right.
Some of it goes to some of the municipalities in the county as well, but Destination Giaga gets the lion's share of it.
Okay.
And that, that financial for the detention center, that's not till next week, is it? With the, the fourth quarter payment?
Oh, you're talking about for Ravenwood?
No, for the detention center.
Oh, reported jog, reported jog. I don't know, let's see.
I have not seen anything yet for next week.
Okay.
I can take a look and see what the schedule is.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Now that was like hundred and forty-eight.
Yeah, that was something, that sounds more right.
I know their usage is way down, you know, this year it's like fourteen percent or something.
Yeah, we typically, they do like a true-up of the amount, and then we get a dispersment back, like a refund, so... But it doesn't affect the current year's charges at all if they're, are lower, so...
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the financials?
Second.
Commissioner Claypool?
Hi.
Mr. Landy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You know, and to add to that, and Glenn, you know, I, this, it's not to be taken out of context or the wrong way, you know, and kudos to you. I mean, you're, you do a great job as far as with the, you know, with these financials not getting approved for this job, but it's just, you're extremely accommodating and you do a great job, and you've been maintaining these buildings, you know, and kudos to you as far as trying to stay on top of this stuff, because without your efforts, I think we'd probably have some major problems, you know? And it's, I don't want it to go unnoticed to of your efforts, you know, because you do. It's, and this is no way to be taken personal or by, you know, that it's anything directed towards maintenance or anybody per se. It's just what's smart, so...
I totally understand.
Thank you.
And I don't compliment you often.
I'm sitting back here almost tearing my mouth...
Was that a compliment?
I think that's the second time in six years.
You brought a tear to his eye.
Morning.
Morning.
Next few items relate to Canyon Lakes Colony Phase fourteen. This is up off of Northview. We changed that north view to Clayton Trail recently this year, so these items really are based on our maintenance guarantees and our performance guarantees to complete the work. So first item, item four on here is asking the board to execute the mortgage releases for subplots three oh four, three oh nine, and three ten. They were used to hold maintenance and pavement guarantees for Silk Ridge and Quarry Circle. We're actually gonna use them further, but we need to release them from what their current place, placeholder are.
Okay, so do we have a motion for that?
Second.
Commissioner Claypool? Commissioner Landy?
Hi. This...
The next item is requesting the board to approve and accept the mortgage deed for subplot three oh four, which just released in a new role, to be held as a ten percent maintenance guarantee for county engineer's office for the pavement that was placed, the surface that was placed this year, and part of the ten percent maintenance bond for water resources for the water lines that were playing through. So that's for their one-year maintenance period to hold the cost for that.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Claypool?
Yes.
Mr. Landy?
Item six is requesting the board to accept and execute the mortgage deed for subplot three ten to be held as a ten percent maintenance guarantee for Quarry Circle, Silk Ridge, those for this, for the year that's since Silk Ridge surfaced out. So we'll just hold the maintenance, and if there's anything in a year's time, if the pavement needs to be fixed, this maintenance guarantee covers that.
And now, so there won't be an exchange of cash, but rather the...
Not with Canyon Lakes. This is pure, Canyon Lakes is the only one that, based on an old judgment entry, that we use mortgage, mortgages for different subplots.
Okay.
Second.
Commissioner Claypool?
Yes.
Mr. Landy?
Item seven is requesting the board approve and execute the final plot for Canyon Lakes Colony subdivision fourteen A. This is actually for the extension of Clayton Trail in Bamburgh Township. That was actually built all the way to completion, so usually we wait till everything is built out and then we'll put the surface on. But because there's no homes being built on this section of roadway, it's really more of a connector, and the amount of work and loading that's gonna be coming through, we wanted to make sure this area was done.
Gotcha.
With the number of units.
So they are built out there, I mean, there's no more room to...
No, they are not built out.
Oh, okay.
There's more, but just for this section.
For that part, okay.
Yeah, because of the Canyon Ridge private section that's going on to the south, we wanted to get our section done and complete, and it's, the next phase of this would actually come off of this circle that was put in, and it runs back down and connects to Sugarin Road. So there is a whole nother public road that can go in here, that's a possibility based on the original judgment entry.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Claypool? Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
And then, number eight, the last one here is requesting the board accept Silk Ridge Township Road ten sixty-five, Quarry Circle ten sixty-eight, and the extension of Clayton Trail Township Road ten seventy-one for snow and ice removal only by Bamburgh Township.
Second.
Commissioner Claypool?
Yep. Yes.
Straight across, yeah, I'll let him know it's coming. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You have a good day now, thank you. Just one, right?
Yes, it's a lot of pages, but it's just one.
Hey Dick, I saw that Haskins Road, they got that all tied up, huh? Done?
The bridge is complete, and then the repair project that was scheduled, that was, we were able to get that in too.
Yeah, with all the rain, that was a miracle, that such a, I go by it, and it's just such a bad spot.
It was a, we'll just call it a perfect storm.
Yeah.
It was an area where we took the bridge out, and we all know the weather we've had, and it just, you know, the contractor did really good with it and maintain, and we got a good project done.
Yeah, good job getting that done. I know that was on the to-do list, trying to get it done before, before the weather hit, you know, so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no one here from the sheriff's office to handle the Morgan County thing, so it's just the...
Is this for a sale of a vehicle?
Cut two vehicles, twenty-five hundred each, they're both twenty thirteen and palos, both around over a hundred thousand miles.
How much, am I wrong?
Twenty-five hundred.
That's a hell of a deal.
Morgan County is the fourth least populous county in Ohio with a population of fifteen thousand fifty-four.
One has ninety-nine, four seventy, the other one's a hundred and nineteen, I know two.
So are they, so we're, we sold them?
Well, if you guys approve it, yes.
Oh, okay.
And that's usually more than we'll get on other gov deals, sometimes they're just about the same.
Well, it's, it's fair, I mean, this, these actually include the cages and some of their equipment because we can't use them now. We don't have, we're not supplying towers anymore.
Yeah.
So they're getting a little equipment with it, yeah. So it's a good deal for them, but again...
You can use that.
You want to sign this thing?
Go ahead, the second.
Second.
Commissioner Claypool?
Yes.
You know, and it's something that, I mean, not to be taken for granted, I mean, these are, these sheriff's departments getting new cars of what, you know, were, you know, they're considering that new.
Right.
We're fortunate, you know, I mean, when you see...
Fifty thousand people, you wonder how many people they have on the road every one time anyway.
You see, you know, you count your blessings.
And we're buying, you know, eight brand-new spanking, brand-new ones.
All wheel drive sport use.
Last year the two you sold to them were two thousand and ten. This year they're two thousand and...
So, yeah, let's keep it in context.
Yeah, it is, it's...
I mean, yeah.
You know what I mean? You can't forget that it's, it's time to take things for granted. Jerry?
Morning. First item is just for our upper corners upgrade Troy Oak's replacement project. We're converting Troy Oak to a pump station. This is funding we're able to obtain through the Ohio Public Works Commission via grant, the loans. This is just the first paperwork on that to approve us making the final application for that and making, or setting Commissioner Lemon as the chief executive officer of the city.
So here's the resolution to him, and this is the application for Kansas.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Claypool? Commissioner Landy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Can't believe it's November.
Please, six.
Okay, so what we have left here is with the Veteran Service Commission. And we have...
Here's one that they'll give to them, and then here is also a stamp to send to all of the American Legion posts, the BFW posts, and the AMB posts in the county.
Okay, do you wanna, do you wanna read one of them, Christine?
Do I invite the ladies, huh?
Yeah, for sure.
And John, I'm sorry, ladies and John.
Ladies and John.
Hello, how are you guys?
Wonderful. Yeah, resolution eighteen dash one forty-nine, in honor and respect of America's veterans this November eleventh Veterans Day. Whereas World War One, known as the Great War, officially ended when the Treaty of Versailles was signed June of nineteen nineteen, however, seven months prior, Armistice was signed and went into effect on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month, November eleventh, nineteen eighteen, and is often referred to as the end of the war to end all the wars. And whereas November eleventh, nineteen nineteen, President Wilson proclaimed the first commemoration of Armistice Day, to us in America, the reflections of Armistice Day will be filled with solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service and with gratitude for the victory. Whereas May thirteenth, nineteen thirty-eight, an act was approved causing November eleventh to be deemed a legal holiday, thus making the date be dedicated to the cause of world peace and thereafter be known as Armistice Day. However, that act was amended June first, nineteen fifty-four, causing the day to be known as Veterans Day and became the day to honor American veterans of all wars. Whereas November eleventh is a day that all Americans should take pause to honor and respect those that have served, have fought, and continue to fight for their love of country and their sacrifice for the common good. Whereas on this day, November eleventh, we say thank you for your dedication, your bravery, and for fighting for our freedom. Now therefore be it resolved that the Joddo County Board of Commissioners do hereby honor and respect all of America's veterans for their patriotism, their continued sacrifice defending our nation, and ask that the residents of Joddo County show their support to remember and honor our veterans.
Thank you for your service, for sure. Huge day, no doubt.
To move. Second.
Commissioner Claypool? Mr. Landy?
Hi. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to take a second if I could.
Sure.
We have a distinguished veterans coin that our office has came up with last year, and we would like to take a moment and issue Dave Lehrer. A distinguished veterans coin. Thank you for your service to the nation and the continued dedication to our country.
Thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you.
Very cool. Take a picture?
Sure, yes.
You see, I'm pretty good with this thing. Here, she didn't take it.
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Oh, well, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. If you guys want to, we can, if you guys just hold up a second, we'll sign this one here and then we'll give this to you.
Thank you.
So what are some of the plans for Veterans Day?
Obviously, Mr. Landys has his, the big thing with the shard and BFW, and then other places around Newbury and things like that.
So that, that usually is gonna be what, over at St. Mary's?
Yes. It starts up on the square at eleven o'clock. They have Lieutenant Colonel West this year, and then they will move over to St. Mary's for luncheon.
Very nice.
It's gonna be a great speech, I'm sure.
Yes, definitely.
It's, it's pretty neat how he brings these, these different speakers. Do you guys help him with that too?
Sometimes we do, but most of the time he goes out and finds them himself.
Yeah, I know he, I went there when Rocky Blyer was there, and it was pretty amazing.
Yes, definitely.
Colonel West is gonna be awesome as well, so I'm really glad he got in.
Yes, definitely.
Wonderful.
It's something you don't wanna miss, just to be up there for the speech. It's amazing.
So how, do we, do we have still any World, so as far as in Giaga, what are our war vet counts that we have right now as far as, what, World War Two probably is?
They're diminishing quickly, it's fifteen hundred per day. So we have, I would say, less than five hundred left. So we have, I would say, less than five hundred left in this county.
Wow.
Yeah, I saw something, they had something on Fox eight news last night, they were talking about it, you know, how many were left.
Right.
Yeah. Not many.
We have a number of veterans right in this room.
Yes, we do.
Although, they're Navy guys, I'm not sure.
We all need the Navy.
It'd be interesting to see the new Space Force, so I'm sure that happens, so that's gonna be...
Yes, definitely. Thank you very much for your...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
People have already said you've reached basic, so I don't mean that. Sit right in.
Christie, this is Tim's.
The only thing we've got is Friday the ninth, we've got an OAKA financing audit meeting at thirty AM. Governance's at ten, Executive Committee at eleven thirty. Sunday is eleven eleven of November, it's Veterans Day, just spoke about. And then the county offices will be closed on Monday. On Tuesday, we have a solid waste at ten thirty in Warren. And then Thursday, we've got our planning commission meeting at seven thirty. And then nine thirty, then we would be back over here, so... Jerry, anything that you got, or any updates on anything, you're good, Dave? Nothing?
We were planning to... You're planning to walk through that Bedlam property, but...
Everything would be wetlands today.
Yeah, exactly. It's a little tough to determine.
And Roger Peterson's gonna fly the drone over and try and find him, that would be the goal.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think other than that, motion to adjourn. Get out and vote.